What happened to his?
It's recording.
How we rolling?
Yep.
All right, it is six o'clock. Um, welcome to the Town of Batesburg, Leesville. It's, uh, council work session, January twenty-sixth, twenty-one-two. Uh, beautiful town hall complex in Batesburg, Leesville. Thank you everyone for coming. And, uh, and so I'll call this meeting to order now. And if I could ask, is there anyone who would like to give the indication this evening? Mr. Gamble, if you would, as soon as you clear your mouth. And we'll give you a moment.
Ladies and gentlemen, our gracious goodness and the Father, we come before you in this moment for asking for love, forgiveness, and our mercies. We ask you, Lord, that we can have this meeting in a gentlemanly way, that we ask questions relevant to what we need to do, and we get receive answers to our questions. Please forgive us, guide us, and direct us. In thy name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Let's see, stand for the pledge. Mr. Gamble, if you would, he does the pledge as well, sir.
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. New business this evening. We have two items this evening. Um, item A is presentation of final infiltration and inflow study by Frazier Engineering. And item B is discussion relating to possible future expenditure of American Rescue Plan funds. Um, again, ladies and gentlemen, this is a work session. There will be no motions made, no votes taken. Um, this discussion will be open, uh, but polite. Um, and I will now turn it over to Town Manager Ted Luckydo to introduce our guests this evening.
All right, uh, we'd like to introduce Troy Machazek, um, who has been our lead on this infiltration and inflow study, um, over the past few months, um, worked really hard, had a lot of communications back and forth, uh, just trying to get to this point right here for them to present tonight. And I would like to, uh, introduce Mr. Frazier in the back. Um, he, uh, is the...
He's the Frazier.
He's the Frazier at Frazier Engineering. So, um, appreciate him coming out as well. These two together will, uh, be presenting the findings of the infiltration and inflow study. Each of you have a full copy, uh, quite a bit of reading, but wanted to make sure you had a copy that you could take home with you to, to further read through if you wish to do so. But they're going to hit the highlights of this study tonight for you.
All right, thank you. Uh, first of all, um, I'm Mr. Luckydo, said I'm Troy Machazek, Frazier Engineering, and Mr. Aaron Frazier in the back. But just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the town council and, uh, Mayor Scholl and town staff as well for the opportunity, uh, to provide this study. And then also I wanted to mention during the study, and we'll get into kind of all the steps and processes, processes we took, um, but we're out trucking easements, going through woods, trying to find manholes. And several times we had to reach out to the utilities department saying, hey, you know, we're having a hard time, we're not exactly sure which way we're going. And, and most times they were able to stop what they were doing to come out and assist and help locate some of those assets. So we did really appreciate that and, and the support. So with that, just really quickly, what we plan to, to run through this evening, um, first of all, just a quick overview of who we are at Frazier Engineering, um, the locations we are, and the type of work that we do. And then also we'll get into the project background and the history and why we even, you know, why are we even doing this study? Um, what were the catalysts for us, you know, performing the analysis that we've done? Uh, we'll talk into, um, some of the, the work that we did with the flow monitoring to actually measure, uh, the inflow and infiltration that's coming into the wastewater system. And then what we did actually in the field, uh, the condition assessment as part of the SSES work, uh, sanitary sewer evaluation survey, which is actually kind of putting our eyes on the pipes, on the manholes, and figuring out exactly how, you know, where those defects are, where the major concerns are. And then we'll take all that information and, and kind of summarize what we found and our recommendation of the next steps and where the town needs to go to rehab these, these assets. So really quickly, Frazier Engineering, uh, just, just one slide for this. Founded in nineteen ninety-eight, Mr. Aaron Frazier, we focus solely on the wastewater industry. And with that, we do, uh, bread and butter is, is flow monitoring, SSES study, rehab evaluations, um, do work for a lot of customers here in the Midlands, uh, do some work in Lexington and East Richland County, um, from Greenville area and down at the coast as well. Uh, right now we're forty-five plus, employees are growing. We have three office locations. I'm out of the Columbia, South Carolina office. We've got another office in Greenville and then one just outside of, of Charlotte. And then, um, like I said, this is, this is all that we do. Um, you're not going to see us on the water side, you know, we're strictly on the wastewater side, uh, and the rehab side of things. Okay, so project background. Um, so we were contacted, um, by town staff, uh, you know, they were just, during rain events, started noticing, um, just an increased amount of loading at the wastewater treatment plant, um, which is leading to excessive, uh, cost of treat water, a lot of overflows within the system, and reducing capacity in the collection system as all this, you know, during the rain events, as the wastewater made its way to the treatment plant. So we were contacted, um, to come in and perform a flow monitoring study to, you know, kind of quantify how much volume of IONI is actually getting into that system during these rain events. So we came in and we installed actual meters throughout the system to, to measure what that increase inflow was. Um, and why did we do that? So we could actually put a number to the amount of IONI in the system and then come up with ways to eliminate or to reduce that excess inflow into the system. And ultimately what we do with that is, is bring you guys a rehabilitation plan on how to best, uh, use the town's resources to rehab the sources. So like I mentioned, uh, flow monitoring was the first step we did. We installed twelve flow meters, uh, throughout the town system, kind of at basin junction points, if you will. Um, and I think there's another version of the, of this map in the report that may be a little bit easier to read. Um, but what we did, you actually come in and you install, um, a flow meter in the sewer pipe at a strategic location, and it measures the increase in wastewater flow, um, during, you know, dry weather events, uh, as your baseline, as well as during storm events for your wet weather flows. Uh, we did this from December twenty-twenty-one through, uh, March of, or December twenty-twenty through March of twenty-twenty-one, so roughly four months, um, during, you know, a wet season where we do see historically a lot of rain events. Um, like I said, we, we calibrated those to the average day dry weather events, um, in order to measure the wet weather flow increases. So this table, I, I know it's, it's going to be hard, and I've got several tables like this that are going to be hard to actually see the, the numbers, so I'll try to describe, you know, what we're trying to show here. But this is, you know, kind of our calibration table of where you, where you're starting off with on an average day. Um, we have a average flow based on the percent capacity or theoretical capacity of what that pipe can handle. Um, and then we also have a capacity percentage based on the depth or the flow, amount of flow in, in that pipe. Um, so these yellow highlighted cells are basically showing everything, the three locations where on your average day, you're already at fifty percent depth in the pipe without any rain events. Um, so that's, um, area one. I'm standing up here, I got some, some notes. So area one, um, is, is kind of at the base of the system, just on the trunk line at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, so that one, we're showing it roughly just over fifty percent, fifty-point-two percent depth of flow, average, average day. Um, site six was the, the middle one there, fifty-one percent. Um, Shealy Road is probably the most recognizable road, kind of back behind the McDonald's area. And the last one that we're showing is site ten, which is on the northernmost part of the system. Um, I think it's Line Street. There was an old wastewater treatment plant there, facility, but I believe is a pump station now, um, and at the highest, that fifty-seven-point-nine percent.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Was there a correlation between the aging of the pipe and the actual, uh, reference depth?
Uh, we didn't...
You have a reduced diameter due to age, so therefore, uh, fifty gallons per minute flow would be six inches in a twelve-inch pipe normally, but...
Most, most of what we saw was, was clay pipe.
Yes.
Um, and typically, historically, you don't see a reduction in diameter from, from clay pipe. Um, it actually holds up very well size-wise, where you see clay pipes and issues and defects with clay pipes or your joints, where you'll see roots grow in, that's where you kind of see your infiltration. So we, we kind of calibrated to figure out, you know, where our starting level was. And then we kind of got into our wet weather summary, where we're looking at the rain events, measuring the intensity of those rain events, the duration, how long the, um, event lasted, and, and its availability to get into the system to measure the inflow and infiltration. Um, real quick, I probably should have started off with that. I'm going to say IONI, inflow infiltration. I guess I probably needed to find that, um, for you guys. So inflow is the ability of groundwater, stormwater, to get into the sit, their collection system via a direct connection. Um, we see that could either be somebody's got a gutter system tied into a manhole or an actual storm drain culvert tied into the, the collection system. Infiltration is typically where we see stormwater or rainwater getting into the system through defects, be cracks in pipes or leaks in manholes. Um, so I just wanted to make sure to clarify.
So you're saying that the, the, the inflow that you're looking at, none of it is in the initial design? We don't have intentional tie-ins between our stormwater?
No, sir.
We do not have intentional?
Not intentional.
Okay. So both inflow and infiltration are negative?
Yes. Um, so we did...
It happens non-intentional.
Say that again.
You have non-intentional.
That's what inflow is?
Yeah.
We did have four measurable rain events, um, during, uh, during the flow monitoring process. Um, I believe two of these were what we're going to call greater than a two-year event, so, um, most likely to occur, I guess, once every two years is the frequency. Um, so fairly significant rainfalls, which was good for the study. And I think we had one that maybe was, I think our lowest one was right about an inch, which was less than a year. And I think we've had one, um, it's actually weird. On one part of the system, we had two rain gauges installed as well. It was actually right around a one-year event. And on the south side, it was actually greater than a two-year event. So kind of really, really intense on one side of the system, but not so much on the other.
Troy, just, uh, you got to interrupt something. But to put the two-year in context a little bit, DHEC generally requires, um, you to address sewer system overflow related to a two-year event. And what I mean is if you, if you have overflows in your system during a one-year event, that's really a problem. If you have overflows in a two-year event, it's still a problem with DHEC because you're to have no overflow. So that's, that's the state of the matter. But in studies that we do, um, often we are designing improvements around the two-year event. And in general, state regulators and EPA have accepted that as kind of a designed storm. You know, if you had to design improvements around a ten-year event, you may need a pipe that's, you know, a hundred and eight inches in diameter, you know? So there is some basis to Troy pointing out the two-year event because that is something that regulators at least expect you to comply with, at least.
So I do, I, I did pick a few visuals to try and help explain, you know, the data we're getting from these flow meters and, and what it's actually telling us. Um, so this first one was, was at a, you know, a site, site three, um, within the system. And this, this lighter blue line along the bottom, that's our average day flow. Um, so that's kind of our, our, our baseline, so to speak. The bolder line coming from the top, that's our rain event. Um, so on this particular, on this particular, you know, storm event, uh, the, the March sixteenth event, we're about just, uh, three tenths of an inch is, is the total amount of, of rainfall. And what this red line is representative of is our wet weather flow. So you can see us, you know, we're kind of tracking along average day and wet weather, you know, about the same as you would expect. We get this rainfall event, our wet weather flow shoots up as all the infiltration and inflow gets into our system. We're starting to measure that, and then it takes almost a little over two days until it kind of starts getting trending back to, to normal. So what that's telling us is we have a lot of those little cracks, a lot of those leaks in the manholes, a lot of open cleanouts, service lines where that water's just kind of working its way into the system.
Is that just one site?
That was just one site.
Yes, sir.
This is another one. Uh, this is that, that site ten, which is at the northern part of the system along Line Street. Uh, very similar, and you can kind of see we're trending, you know, reasonably close. We get our storm event, and then we shoot up, uh, a high peak right here off the top, and then that water's continually to, to work its way into the system. And this one, at this location, uh, it kind of takes a little over three days to actually get back. And I will caveat, site ten was probably, that basin was probably the worst one out of, out of all of them. So this was, you know, the most intense rain event in your worst location. This was another location which I, I wanted to show, it's showing something a little bit different. Um, you can kind of see we're trending, you know, the average day and wet weather flow, um, like we would, we get the rain event, we jump up immediately, then almost immediately come back down, and then we're trending, uh, the same. So what that's telling us is we need to look for potential inflow in that location. So it's not working its way in over time. It's one of those direct connections, you know, whether it's, um, you know, storm drain or something that immediately gets our peaking factor up. We're seeing a lot of flow, um, initially, and then once that, you know, rain event ends, it's not taking a few, few days to get its way into the system. So that's what this immediately, immediate jump is, is representative of. This was another location, I wanted to throw this on here. This is probably one of your, your better ones. Um, you know, we're kind of trending the same both before and after the storm. There is a little bit of difference, um, but based on, you know, something like this, we're not going to prioritize a lot of work in this area, you know, because we want to take care of these illicit connections. We want to take care of all these, you know, the cracks and fractures and broken pipes in, in these other areas is where we want to concentrate kind of our, our initial phase of rehab. And then, you know, as time and budget allows, we can kind of come back and address these, you know, as the town sees fit. So once again, we kind of wanted to put it in a percentage based on capacity and depth of pipe for each storm event. Um, so our, our least amount of that, uh, the, the one-year or one-inch, December thirty-first event, everything, you know, trended pretty, pretty well, um, except for site ten, which I've, you know, indicated is probably our worst site, had, um, a percent of diameter, uh, depth of flow, um, above a hundred. So we had pretty full pipe flow in that location. Um, and as the, obviously as the rain intensity, um, intensifies, as the amount of rain increases with a storm event, uh, you can see a lot more of these sites pop up with those peaking factors. Um, so we're getting a lot more flow into the system, and then as well as the depth of flow in the pipe at those near locations are exceeding full pipe. Basically the same thing for, for each storm event. Um, you can see a lot of these same areas are, are highlighted for multiple storm events. Um, site one, site six, site ten, um, we're kind of the common recurring areas. So what that tells us is that those are our probably most problematic areas. That's where we need to concentrate our field investigations, um, that's where we need to concentrate our, our rehab efforts in order to cut those peak, peak flows down as best we can and to, uh, reduce as much of that IONI in those areas first. So we came in, we presented the, the flow monitoring studies, uh, with town staff, and we kind of came up with a field investigation phase of the report to figure out, you know, what are we going to do? How are we going to investigate this, this, or other? So we picked those most problematic basins, the ones that kept reoccurring, that we saw the high amounts of influence, infiltration, and came up with a plan to, um, do our smoke testing, our manhole, uh, investigations. And then we also included this, this bottom section down here, uh, the, the walk the interceptor sewers and inspect the manholes in, um, certain sections. So we knew the trunk sewers, um, typically historically followed kind of creek lines. They're in the back of somebody's field, um, they don't often get looked at or inspected. So very likely, you know, there could be a major defect back there that just nobody's aware of. You know, manhole lid got knocked off, um, being next to creeks, you know, a lot of, you know, flash floods come in and do a lot of damage to those manholes. So since we were already going to be out in a lot of these areas, we wanted to go ahead and walk the major trunk lines, the larger diameter lines that feed directly to the treatment plant to see if there's any, I guess, showstoppers, uh, smoking guns, if you will, along those areas. So this is kind of a map of, of what we performed in the field. I mentioned that we wanted to perform the manhole inspections, um, which is basically we're going into the manhole with, with cameras, and we have tablets, and we're tracking, um, you know, basically design data for that manhole. So if that manhole is issued for rehab, a contractor knows how tall it is, how wide it is, what material it is, everything that they would need to know in order to put a price to, to rehab that manhole. So that's where we performed our manhole inspections. We also performed smoke testing. Um, I'm sure it was, uh, quite the event around here. I don't know how many extra calls y'all, y'all got during that process, but we actually forced, um, smoke into the system, uh, through blowers and forced air, and the smoke will exit the system at those, those defects. We were talking about those cracks and fractures. And a lot of manhole or, um, sewer line cleanouts, lateral cleanouts, you know, that get hit with lawnmowers, um, I'm sure a lot of those were smoking. Um, so we want to at least identify all those defects as potential IONI sources. And then also we were able to, um, perform CCTV inspection. We had a little bit of extra budget, um, left over, so we wanted to get in that main trunk line sewer with, um, CCTV, which is basically a robot that we insert into the sewer system via a manhole, and it, um, kind of scan around and take a picture and zoom in on a defect to see actually how bad the internal condition of that pipe is.
So I, my eyes are bad, but, but so I can visualize where this is located. Uh, the center point, uh, can you identify a street or the center point of this presentation in particular?
So looks like we've got Salute Avenue, one seventy-eight coming into town, Summerlin Avenue, um, this is going to be three ninety-one. Three ninety-one going out. This is highway one. So center of town Walmart area around here.
So the majority of the issues here are in the Batesburg district and not in Leesville area? And that's due to the fact that our source system is more sparse in the Leesville area?
I guess it, it'd be hard to say more. Just because there's more defect number doesn't necessarily equate to quantity or volume all the time. I will say this area three was, was one of the highest peaking factors. It's a really small system, it's really short. I don't believe it's, it's very old, but that was one of the systems that we had the highest peaking factor. Does that make sense? Okay. So on, on this map, this, the red areas are areas we decided to perform, um, what we considered our worst areas, are smoke testing and manhole inspections. The green areas would be just the areas where we did the manhole inspections. And then we also performed the CCTV, um, probably from this three ninety-one right here down to the, um, treatment plant. Okay, so what did we find? So we were able to inspect over, or four hundred and thirteen manholes throughout the town system. I believe there's six hundred and sixty-something, so we were able to look at a pretty significant, you know, portion of the town's manhole. A hundred and eighty-two were associated with frame and covers, um, so framing covers kind of right there at the top that kind of holds the manhole lid in place. A hundred and fifty-four manhole defects were associated with leaks internal to the manhole, so that infiltration coming in. Um, eighteen manhole defects associated with the bench, so that's the bottom, uh, portion of the manhole. And then five, we just had some debris that we needed to get pulled out. There were several, I think one, we had a manhole lid sitting in the bottom, um, on the bench, a lot of, um, a few manholes had some bricks starting to fall out, um, so things that would require pump repairs. Seventy-five, um, manholes we couldn't locate. Um, that seems like a lot, but historically that's, that's really not. Um, I want to bring up, you know, those trunk lines, those things that don't get, uh, easement areas that don't, aren't accessed much, aren't maintained, a lot of stuff gets thrown over a lot of these in yards. People don't like to look at them, there's landscape over them. So we feel like we did a pretty decent job from the, um, from the inspection standpoint. Twenty-three we did find, uh, but we weren't able to access them. What we see for that is maybe cars parked on top of the manholes, you know, come back a few days and, you know, nobody answers the door, can't get the car moved. Uh, we've seen fence, fences placed right across manholes where, you know, there's no way to kind of open it because the fence goes directly across the top. Um, trying to think what else we saw out here. Uh, paved, sometimes they'll get paved over, you can tell that there's a manhole here, but, you know, the years of resurfacing, it's just hard to, to beat those off sometimes. So you got to wait until you actually have a contractor on site with machinery to do potential rehab in order to, you know, fully inspect some of those. Um, and then one, we had, uh, it was constantly surcharged, so it means the water level's rising in the manhole, so you can't really see enough into it to actually perform the inspection.
Is that the one on Oak Street?
I think it was, I must say, area nine, um, which I want to say is probably closer towards elementary school, middle school area. And then, uh, everything that we expected, and, and these do overlap, so a couple manholes have a couple of these defects, so it's not cumulative there. Um, a hundred and seventy of the four hundred and thirteen that we inspected were fine and, and, you know, would recommend no rehab at this point. I tried to be somewhat strategic with what I showed. I wanted to show some of the conditions, but I knew that, um, we're having dinner as well, so I wanted to take that into consideration. Um, and I've, I've got more if we want to pull it up later for the presentation purposes. Um, so these, these are kind of some of the worst manholes, uh, or worst conditions. You can kind of see in this one, there's, there's a lot of roots going into it, so it means infiltration. There's active leaks, there's not much of a manhole invert or bench down in the bottom. Um, this next one, uh, we opened the lid and there's just water pouring into the manhole. It was in a low-lying area in the street, so every time it rains, the runoff just kind of puddles right there on top of the manhole. Manhole has a hole in it for a vent, so that water's just constantly pouring into the system. Um, you know, this one right here, another stormwater-related issue, it's got a, a concrete swell, you know, pointed directly at the manhole, and the manhole, um, was actually cracked with a frame and cover, so there's, there's kind of a direct access point to that manhole. Um, and then, you know, you got, so this is an instance where you did see some of the bricks starting to fall out on the manhole, um, just sitting kind of here at the bottom. So how do we, how do we, um, repair these items? So there's, there's, you know, multiple different ways. So, you know, for one, with the manholes sitting in the road, where the water's, you know, kind of sitting on top of it, uh, lack of drainage, you know, we could, we can install these inflow dishes. That's a, you know, really cheap, quick, easy fix. Um, for the frame and covers that are, that have been knocked off and offset, we can come in and a lot of times just reuse the existing infrastructure, just kind of re, reset it and reseal around it. Um, for manholes where the bricks are falling off, we get a lot of infiltration in, we recommend coming and do a recommend coming and doing a cementitious lining where they come into the manhole and just spray and get a new base layer to prevent that infiltration from coming in. We showed a couple bench issues, we can come in, same, similar product, we can reform the bench to allow positive flow through that manhole. And then, for ones that we couldn't locate, oftentimes, we'll come in and locate them, and then we can actually raise them up so that, you know, less likely to get covered up again in the future. So, that was our manholes. So, then, next, we did the smoke testing, just wanted to quickly go through what we did here. We were able to smoke test 86,100 feet. And, you know, kind of typically, what you would expect in a system similar to the sound, we only had eight defects associated with the main line, which is good. 25 were associated with manholes, 45 were service lateral cleanouts, the actual missing cab or broken cab kind of defects, and then, four where we saw smoke coming from the actual lateral itself. And then, we did end up with one storm drain connection.
Clarify further, surface lateral.
Okay, so, obviously, we have our main sewer line that kind of, I guess, collects, that runs manhole to manhole, but each house or business has a service lateral that runs either from that main line to, you know, the facilities within the building, or it can go into a manhole directly. So, every time you have a bend in that service lateral, you're supposed to have a cleanout to be able to access that. The little white caps typically, you know, in the yard is the ones that everybody likes to run over with a lawnmower. So, this one is our, the one storm drain that we had smoking, so we did have an illicit connection to the system here. You know, this is a manhole that's, obviously, has a lot of smoke coming, it's right off the edge of the road, stormwater kind of coming off directly into the ditch, probably a frame and cover defects, so every time we have, you know, increased flow through that ditch or off the road, it's probably getting directly into the manhole. And then, here, I grabbed this picture, it's a cleanout, it's in the parking lot, but if you notice, just up, you know, there's the building, but there's gutter system, and it's all pointed directly down towards that cleanout. So, it's all kind of getting in directly. You know, it's a small hole, but you can see gallons per minute during a rain event from that one small defect. So, how do we, you know, we figured out what our smoke defects are, so what are some options to rehabilitate those? For areas where we suspect that we have blockages, we can perform heavy cleaning, which is basically a water jet head that can be pushed through the system and pulled back to be able to clean debris. There's also methods, depending if you have a lot of root intrusion, which we didn't see too much on what we actually inspected so far, but there's cutter heads that spin and can go through the system and kind of cut roots and pull that debris out. We can perform more CCTV inspections, which is, you know, the camera running down the pipe to actually get the visual to see maybe, you know, we got smoke coming from this main line, is it collapsed, is it blocked, is it just a fracture? Which would tell us, you know, is that something we need to dig on top of, or can we just line through it and not have heavy equipment out there and lots of restoration with our open cut repairs? We could also perform CIPP lining, and a lot, I will say, a lot of these are gonna overlap these rehab methods with the CCTV, so we'll have more pictures for some of these other methods next. But, we do cure it in place, pipe lining, so if we see a pipe segment that had a lot of smoke defects along it, you know, a lot of times, it's more feasible to just put in a liner through that pipe to repair the structural integrity and to get the infiltration out rather than digging up incremental segments. We have this technology called pipe bursting, which is basically pulling a brand-new, a flexible pipe through the pipe, the hose pipe. A lot of times, we'll see that with increasing diameters, if we have lower capacity and we need to have a larger diameter size, we'll use that. Then, also, there's open cut replacement, which is typically a last resort. So, we did perform CCTV on that trunk line heading down to the wastewater treatment plant. We were able to get about 3,300 linear feet of that done. And what we showed, and we knew it kind of, for that area, it parallels a pond, is that pond has a specific name?
Davis Pond.
Davis Pond. So, it kind of runs right along the edge of Davis Pond. I think on the upper end, there's been like some beaver activities, there's some beaver dams, so a lot of this infrastructure just sits underwater, and that water's making its way into the system. So, you can kind of see here, these are just a few still shots of the CCTV that we took, just the amounts of water kind of coming into the system along that area. Getting into our rehab method, this is a picture of the CIPP pipe. The liner's been pulled through and cured either by water cure, steam cure, or UV cure. This was a kind of exhibit of our pipe bursting, and then, obviously, our open cut pipe replacement.
What did you say that material was for curing?
It's like a woven liner material, but it's impregnated with a resin, so it needs to be cured either UV, water cure, or steam. And it just kind of sets up anywhere from, depending on the size, a few hours to half a day.
So, it gets heated to like 180 degrees. So, it comes in a refrigerated truck packed with ice, it's gotta stay cold. And, you know, any of the heat in the summer, it'll start to kick off and harden, just like, it smells like a boat factory. You know, it smells of styrene odors, like a fiberglass smell, and it heats up with the hot water, steam, 180 degrees.
How would you take, how would you deal with any takeoffs from that pipe that you lined?
You'd come back in, there's another, I guess, robot that gets pulled through, and you have, you come in and you measure exactly, you know, to the tenth of where that service lateral comes in, and it's got a little cutter head that kind of comes in and grinds this material out so that the service is accurate.
If somebody doesn't flush for hours.
Exactly.
You do ask the residents not to use a lot of water during that.
I've seen, I've heard this, I've looked at it, I've never actually done it myself.
It's become, you know, it's, it came to the US in the early 90s, and it's evolved, but we've put in probably 5 million feet of it or designed it, I mean, contractors put it in, but it's always evolving. Troy mentioned UV liner, which is the latest version, and it all comes from Europe, they're about a decade ahead of us, and that's what we're moving toward because it doesn't smell... You'll get a lot of complaints from residents, what's that smell? It smells like a fiberglass factory. The UV cure doesn't smell, it's quicker and it's stronger, so it evolves, but it definitely is very prudent. I mean, we, I mean, we line, clients line of ours, hundreds of thousands of feet over the year. It's quicker, cheaper, you know, that's $35 per foot, and if you dig it with an excavator, it's 200-plus dollars a foot, so you're, it's exponentially cheaper.
And you're adding structural integrity back to it, useful life.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not only cheaper, it's less disruptive, it's quicker. I mean, you line 500 feet of pipe a day, if you're out there digging in the road, you're gonna be lucky to get 75 feet a day, and for 10 times the cost.
So, what we recommended here, based on, you know, the flow monitoring and the areas we wanted to concentrate, because, you know, from what we saw, where we had a lot of the I N I coming into the system, and then, where we found, from what we found with our manhole inspections, our smoke testing, and our CCTV, kind of came up with a phased approach to this, but really wanted to, I guess, concentrate on, you know, what we're calling this Year One Master Plan. This would basically take care of absolutely everything that we found in the system today through the previous good work. So, that's all the infiltration through the lines that we saw, that's the manholes that are failing with the bricks coming out, the manholes with the infiltration coming in through the leaks and the staining, and as well as the smoke testing defects. So, that's probably gonna give you the most bang for your buck to cut those peak flows down rather quickly and to eliminate or further reduce some of that infiltration, so you're not paying to treat that at your wastewater treatment plant.
Can you explain a little bit the grab, the rehab, please, one?
Yeah, so that's the lining through the areas where we were able to CCTV, that's gonna be what that rehab is associated with. And then, we also, because it was a phased approach, we did include kind of additional CCTV in some of the other areas, so that way, year one, you're getting your video footage for what you can potentially rehab the next year, if that makes sense.
So, what impact did, could you come with a number, percentage of impact on current I N I levels that this would have? Reduce it 50%, 30%?
So, what we've seen with what, if we're just taking care of this, these defects right here, a lot of the manhole type stuff. You know, what we've historically seen would be something maybe around 15, 20, 25% I N I reduction. When you get into your comprehensive rehab, where you're kind of doing everything, you're lining all the pipes, all the clay pipes, you can get up to 50, 60%. We've been working in East Richland County for four years, five years, and we started with the same approach, but we've turned it more towards a comprehensive rehab, and we've reduced their I N I about 50% through these methods.
I feel when we're looking at this, you know, we have the high peaks coming up, and that high peak is what is filling up your system and causing it to back up. The long flows that Troy was showing, that's just water that keeps going to your plant for days and days and days. So, that's volume, which adds to your treatment costs, but it may be this deep in your pipe, but the peak flows fill up the pipe back at the manholes and spill on the ground. So, what we would focus on first is trying to get those peak flows so the water stays in the pipe, it doesn't spill, but you're still gonna have all that volume going to the plant because that's where the big comprehensive and where the big dollars start to show up.
Is there an industry standard acceptable I N I percentage? Let's say you've got 3 million gallon flow, 10% is typically a good, well-maintained system, or?
10% would be a very good system.
Okay, so 20%?
20% would probably be a reasonable 15 to 20 would be kind of a regional... We've looked, and I shouldn't speak way out of turn, but Mount Pleasant Water Works, which is on the coast, which has a lot of I N, a lot of groundwater, our renewable water resources over in Greenville is maybe a better comparison, and we've looked at that. Mount Pleasant Water Works is around 20 to 25%. REW, Renewable Water in Greenville, tells us they're about 14 to 15%, and I think that's probably a little low. We do their work, we do Charlotte's work, which is the biggest utility in either Carolina, and they operate around 18% or so. Greenwood, South Carolina is kind of in that 18 to 20%, so that's a normal.
Well, I guess we wouldn't know yet until it's actually completed.
Okay, but swag.
Yeah, for these, I think we'd probably be somewhere in that 15, 20%.
Scientific well, that's guess, like 40%?
Reduction?
No, currently, where an infiltration...
Oh, the overall, okay, the overall.
Because you're talking one year here, and I always think like this, all right, five. What's it gonna take over five years because, or will it take us five years to get to a reasonable number?
Ted, do you have any off the, I mean, one way we could look at it, if we don't have any information, is, you know, what's, you know, your average daily flow to treatment plant? Let's say it's a million gallons, so that month should be 30 million gallons, and how much did you report for that month? You know, did you report 80 million gallons, so we're gonna have 50 million?
I don't have numbers in front of me, I'd say the average monthly, or average daily would be 1.2, 1.3, so, I mean, average daily.
Obviously, we're not gonna eat this well all at one time, but once you start eating the well, you need to know what, how long it's gonna take you to get there and what's it gonna cost.
So, at Site 1, which is kind of the most downstream site right before you go into the treatment plant, we had an average flow of 1.4 M G D. For the March rain event that we had, which was granted the two-year event, at that same location, we had an I N I volume of about 500,000 gallons, based on the flow meter data.
So, that was about 50% more than, but that's just one rain event, you know, for, you have to add all the rain events for the year to get what you're really looking at, but about 50% on that one.
You don't know the cost per thousand gallons treatment, do you, off the top of your head?
I think it's 250.
250?
And to your point about getting there or reaching the goal and trying to see how long it'll take to achieve it, I think our normal recommendation is if we work on these, we're trying to get those peak flows down and keep it in the pipe.
Most bang for the buck.
Yeah, most bang for the buck, by can get that low hanging for, we need to keep the flow in the pipe so D hack doesn't come knocking. And then, systematically work on the volume over a longer period of time because it is a long process. And what we've seen at other places is, it's kind of interesting, you get started, and next thing you know, five years are gone, and you look back and you're like, wow, look, East Richland Public Service District, you look back with that flow I N I by 50% in that four or five-year period, but we got started, we understood it's gonna take multiple years, but let's do the bang for the buck, get the flow to stay in the pipe the best we can, because that's where you get in trouble, as long as the plant can keep up with the volume and meet the permanent limits, and then work on that volume, because the volume, where it stays up for days, that's the expense. And that's why we didn't TV a whole lot in this, because we know, Ted knows, if we go put a camera in the sewer out here, we're gonna find problems. And the stuff under the ground is the most expensive to fix, the lining and whatnot. The manholes and the bang for the buck to shave that peak is where we get, we like to start to try to keep it in the pipe. But this would go on for a long, long time, the rehab program, but the intent for us would be keep D hack at bay best we can, lower the volume over time. And also, in this plan would be, we measure success. So, after we do some work, we don't just assume, hey, we must've gotten that out, we gonna measure it with metering to say, yeah, we did achieve that, and it did work. It just is a process, I mean, it's not a, it didn't get here overnight, and it just takes a while.
Re-answer to my question.
It's comprehensive if we do everything, and honestly, you know, I tried to keep this, or we tried to keep this, you know, very kind of similar for the first five, six years with dollars spent, but it could easily be spread out over 15 years to kind of get from A to B. But, you know, you're looking at 9.4 million to kind of go in, look at everything in your system and do that rehab.
Okay, 9.4 is total, which would be two for six, seven years?
Yes, sir.
9.4, so we're actually looking at 1.4 million per year?
But a lot of, I will say, a lot of utilities, you know, just take an approach where they'll budget a million dollars per year, and then, you just do as much as you can of that million. It doesn't necessarily need to all be done in seven years, this would be a pretty aggressive approach. But, you know, like I wanted, you know, what we're here tonight to recommend is definitely this first... But, you know, like I want, you know, what we're here tonight to recommend is definitely this first phase, bang for your buck, keep it in the pipe at the 1.8. And we can measure that in the future and quantify and see kind of what that reduction actually is. And then kind of make the decision, you know, do we want to take the comprehensive approach?
So was it estimated, how much money this is costing the town? You know, the I N I?
Well, that's no.
Well, trying to, I guess we don't have the exact number, but we can certainly work it up.
We have, and I can, so that we can run this and get back to them. We, in our monthly report, we do every month for council, we have the total processed monthly, the amount that we process and treat it. So we can do maybe a year's worth of that to see, to see what it's doing and get back on that.
Okay, so 9.4 is not going to be new cost necessarily because you have savings involved. Obviously, that 250 per thousand gallons, it's not going to be a direct 250 reduction because some of that is fixed costs. It's going to have to be, no matter what the flow rate is, it's part of that. And then you have step costs and then you have float costs. All right, so it's not going to be a total 9.4 new, but it's going to be a significant amount of water. We need to find the money.
I think too, when you're structuring contracts, you know, we need to make it attractive to contractors to get you the best price that you can get for it. So keeping it a reasonable, you know, a volume over a million, it makes it more attractive, you know, and you get better pricing. If we try to do a $200,000 project, you're not going to get the same amount of work because their pricing will go up. So our job will be to work with Ted too to make sure we're maximizing the way the contract is structured also.
Well, potentially, we're looking at the, what, 3,000, we don't have 3,000. We have, what, about 2,200 sewer customers?
Yeah, it's going to be closer to 2,200.
Because we have about 800 non-sewer water customers. So we're going to be asking 2,200 sewer customers come up with a million dollars a year?
And again, I think that million dollars.
I'm just.
I think we have.
I just want us to all be aware of the fact that we're going to be faced with looking for money somewhere to, if we agree that we want to bring our system up.
Right, and I think, you know, a million dollars a year is pretty aggressive. I understand what you're saying, it don't necessarily have to be a million. But if we can get to a number where we get a contractor wants to give us the best price that he can, but I think we all know a million dollars is going to be probably a stretch.
That doesn't have to be done every year. You could, you know, wait until you have two years' worth of work and then, you know, it's.
Yeah.
You may do worst case and then you back off.
And there are alternative.
We've got checks and grants for some still aren't granted.
Yeah, we've got S R F, you know, we've got several projects where they're, you know, supporting some of the fines to do the rehab work. There are.
All right, great, very funny.
I would think the 9.4 million would be good at S R F, first look at that from a common math and financial standpoint. S R F is a good look.
The, like an R I A grant, which would be a half a million, they look for you to match 25%. So still, we have clients that are going 750,000 dollar projects and they only put in 250. And the 500 was free money for them. So it's, we have clients, we do that every year and they're just knocking away 750 of their system.
Well, you do worst case, best case, and settle in the middle. How typically plays out. You don't ever get best case 100% of the time.
We've had success too, piggybacking other contractors. And we mentioned that East Richland, we have some really good unit prices and a really good contractor, you know. And you can't do that if you're getting grant money because they want you to bid it. But there might be a way to still leverage really good unit prices based on your final budget.
And we could, after year one, after you do all the fixes, we could find out that you fixed 75% of the problem. Then again, it could be.
Maybe we could do the year one and then see what you guys in charge of flow monitor that area and see if it did.
See what the reduction is. Thank you, Troy. Any other questions? Thank you guys for coming tonight. What do we think about a 10-minute break?
Yep, we'll take a break and let them pack up.
Let's restart it.
All right.
Say what we want.
All right, so next item was a discussion regarding the American Rescue Plan dollars. So to begin this conversation, the last time we had had a discussion about this, there was an interim rule that had come out from the Treasury Department. That interim rule was pretty restrictive on the types of things that you could use the money on. And at that time, kind of went through it, water, sewer, things related to COVID vaccination spots or testing spots, premium pay, and a few other items. Well, the final rule came out about a week and a half, two weeks ago, that really opened the doors to being able to use American Rescue, American Rescue Plan funds for a lot more than what was ever planned. It kind of swung the door open to being able to use it for almost.
Just put it up here?
No, okay. So to be able to use the money for about whatever you want to use the money for within reason. So to kind of recap the overview, our total allotment was $2,695,825.4 to be in what they're calling two tranches. The first tranche we've already received, which was $1,347,912.52. We received that this past October. Our second allotment of funds should arrive October of this year, 2022. We should receive the same amount. So in talking to start off the discussion about how we want to spend American Rescue Plan dollars, and Jay and I having sat through this presentation about what the final rule, the changes that that brought, Jay and I sat down and really did a full assessment of what we think from a staff recommendation standpoint. It's obviously open for full discussion tonight on how we want to spend it. But Jay and I have come up with some recommendations that we think will, are things that, there's not quite other funding mechanisms or we would have to raise taxes or raise water and sewer rates to do these things. Or there's not really the grant money available to do these things. What are those priority needs that we see as an administrative staff? So we wanted to recommend those for discussion among y'all tonight as we move through this. And certainly if there's any other ideas that people want to bring forward, those will be up for discussion as well. So the first thing, we've already, we've already started on that. We did a first payment of premium pay for employees. That allotment totaled out to be 181,450.64. If you recall, you had kind of given us permission to go up to 200,000 based on, we didn't know what the part timers were going to end up costing and all of that. But that's what the total ended up being there. As we stated at that time, our recommendation was going to be because COVID is still going on and people are still walking through the door, police officers still dealing with people with COVID, firefighters are still responding to calls where people are COVID positive. The threat of COVID has not gone down. Our intention and our request is to utilize a second allotment of premium pay for employees when we receive the second allotment. And so we're asking for that as a recommendation. Up to 200,000. Obviously, if it costs 181 like it did last time or 190, that will cover it. But we're asking for up to 200,000 out of the second allotment. The next item is a fire engine. Previously, you couldn't do this, but when the final rule came out, it opened the door for purchasing fire trucks and police cars or any other capital equipment that you need for your town. The reason that we're asking for this is if we were to finance, we're at a point where we need to get a new fire truck. And we would need to be looking, moving at how we're going to purchase this fire truck. To finance a new fire engine, the cost is $650,000. We confirmed that on a truck that we specked out about a year ago just to understand what that cost would be. A year ago, it was $550,000. One year later, it's now $650,000 and they are expecting that price to continue to increase. So with that said, if we were to finance a new fire engine for 10 years, our payment would be somewhere between, it would actually be over that, it would probably be closer to $70,000 a year. Well, this is money we would have to generate within our general fund and come up with to be able to make that annual payment of 70, probably 70-plus thousand dollars. So with that said, we have decided to prioritize this from a staff recommendation standpoint as something to be considered to be used out of these funds.
Is that 650 your bottom line or is that 650 the cost of the vehicle? Because you have to decide, we're not adding one new fire truck, we're replacing a unit.
Right, so we would be selling another fire truck, motor engine that we have. And what we expect to receive on a return from that, based on market prices and having asked the question, is Jay went in around 25,000.
About 25,000.
That truck's 26 years old. You're working with pump hours, you're working with mileage and.
Hours is.
This is the chassis, the wear and tear is on the.
There are a lot of mechanical moving parts to a fire engine, especially when you're at the pump panel.
Jay, is that 650,000 dollars include fully equipped or will we have to steal it from the truck we're getting rid of?
That is, that is fully equipped. And then again, the fire chief and Jay at the time sat down and specked a truck that would suit our needs. It's very similar to what we have and operating now. So it's not all the bells and whistles, it's what's needed to go out and put a fire out.
It would actually be very similar to the truck, Sean, that's a Newberry truck that is the newer version of what we've got, so it's essentially that truck.
So 625 will be coming out of 1.2 million?
Yeah, 650.
What are you going to do with the 25 grand that you get?
Well, I mean, that would go back into the general fund as a revenue coming in. It could be, I mean, if you would want to say that's an offset of the 650.
Fair enough.
So 625, okay.
Well, I assume that we were trying to handle the, these funds as a separate one-time sourcing. All right, feeding it back into the general fund is not conducive to that.
Well, I mean, if we wanted to sell the other truck, put the 25,000 back into ARP pot.
Allocate it for another one of your projects in this, okay.
Okay. The next item, in thinking through this, is looking at hiring an IT person for staff and going ahead and allotting $50,000 towards IT infrastructure and hardware that we need to get. I do want to brag on somebody that's in this room. Dave Baldnight has been really saving the town a lot of money for a couple of years now by doing IT for the entire town. He has saved us a lot of money. But the problem is, is it's taking away and using up the majority of his time now and he can't really focus on what his job is and that's being a law enforcement officer and captain in the police department. And we cannot continue to go that direction. So we are at a point, we have a need for an IT person on staff. We do have IT needs from an infrastructure standpoint. We need to improve our networking as a town to be able to have all town departments at separate facilities, all communicating better through one network. But more so, we are very vulnerable from the security standpoint of IT. We hold a lot of personal data on people through our utility billing as well as our human resource softwares. And it's just time for us, I think we've all heard the stories about ransomware at the, at the the water treatment plant, I can't remember if that was in Georgia or Florida. They shut that water system down and that utility had to pay over a million dollars to get their system back online. We are vulnerable to these things and we understand that it's time for us to take the IT step forward. So our request is to allocate 50,000 towards IT supplies and hardware and materials and 62,000 for the first year salary of the IT employee. And that is to include base salary as benefits and wages. And what we would do is this year, and then would move into next year, we would be building the reoccurring money into the budget so that when the '23, '24 budget came around, that money would be there to continue payment for the IT person.
So Ted, did you, did you consider contracting that same?
So it was over $100,000 a year for us to get IT services. BC3, and we also checked with a company called InterDib. I would have to get that out of me.
Can you share the two most?
Sure. Now, they do offer what's called IT in a box where it's kind of an à la carte menu of different things that you can do.
Is it cheaper than that or?
Well, it would depend on which services you picked, so.
Right, but so if you picked the services that were comparable to that, what would the cost be? Because what I'm thinking is that you're talking about, you're not talking about a one-time 62,000 dollar deal. You're talking about a forever.
Right, right, so a reoccurring position.
Right, and then with the benefits and all the things that come with an employee.
Well, that 62 is everything that comes with the employee.
Right, so I'd like to see the side-by-side with the employee versus the contract with somebody like BC3 or another company.
Okay.
That's going to be a full salary position?
Yes.
That's not OT?
Yeah, it would be a salary position.
Well, roughly, you're looking at paying about 45,000 dollars a year.
That's numbers.
My question is, why not, why not take it two years instead of just one?
You're talking about through the American Res, so going ahead and doing a 124.
We have, we have four years to spend the money, right?
We have till 2026 to spend this money.
Okay.
I mean, again, once I'm done, if you, if you want to ask the others about just doubling two-year in that, I mean, that's open for discussion. We put it out there for a full year, but if y'all want to do two-year.
Well, it gives us more flexibility with the general fund budget for the next couple of years in the event inflation really takes off. And it is going to.
It is. All righty, good. All right, the next item we have is in follow-up to what we heard tonight. You know, when we talk about it, you heard him talk about Rural Infrastructure Authority. We have currently three C D B G outstanding projects with Lexington County. And quite frankly, I hope we get a fourth one that we put an application in for. But we're kind of at that max out point in number of projects through Lexington County. So from a grant standpoint, there's just not access right now to, to any more additional grants that we're used to getting for water and sewer infrastructure. As a reminder, this is one of our wastewater D HAC consent order items is to get our overflows that we're experiencing from I N I under control. I think you're familiar with one right down from you on Oak Street. That is called I Infiltration Overflows. So like they said tonight, if we can take that year-one step to keep it in the pipes, that helps us to satisfy the consuming.
Come out Hartley Street?
Yeah.
I have not.
I think they got it in to get. So. So, um, this was the numbers that you saw in his presentation. So, what I'll do, and this is the last slide from the staff recommendation standpoint, is this was our beginning balance. Having paid the premium pay and deducting that off, if we were to do the fire engine, the IT position at what, what we had recommended, I mean, if y'all add another year, that would certainly affect this. But premium pay, um, and that up to two hundred for the second allotment. And if we were to tackle the infiltration inflow number that they had, we would still be coming up two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars short of what would be needed to do all of this. But we could certainly, um, I, I think if we made one point five million dollars, that would be a significant impact. But it also, if we wanted to supplement that two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, I think we would have the means to be able to supplement that to do the full amount. So, just to kind of paint what that would do for the total allocation with our recommendations that we're making. Again, this is our recommendation, the floor is kind of open for y'all's discussion and ideas at this point. Just wanted to let you know what, what we had in mind based on our priorities and needs.
So, we, we funded the IT position for two years, that the red number goes to three hundred and...
Add sixty-two thousand.
Well, yeah, three hundred and sixty thousand, it goes to three hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, and that would move out of the enterprise fund, uh, that would be involving the enterprise fund for it.
Correct.
Okay. So, that's actually essentially shifting sixty-two thousand that you're proposing out of the general fund into the enterprise fund.
And one, one, one thing that I would note, an IT position could, could be dual-funded between enterprise and, and, because the work's going to be done on the utility side and IT infrastructure for that, a- as well as the general fund. I mean, it is kind of a, it can be funded through both funds, essentially. It could be a shared cost between them. We have a lot of IT, uh, stuff on our utility side that this person would be working on.
We have a lot of needs for IT on the...
Yeah. The SCADA, the SCADA system.
Not getting it while the day-to-day operations, but from information gathering and information is a powerful tool.
I agree with that.
We seem to need some emphasis in that area.
Yeah, I agree, that's where we're at, not a rapid, busy stuff every day. Our, our people's IT systems are pretty much locked down pretty good, we're trying to keep this out.
We're going more and more, uh, less and less paper and more and more, and then, I don't know, uh, I mean, we'll, we use the example of Florida, of course, obviously, hopefully, most of our, uh, utility situations are air gassed, so that, I mean...
Well, I'll tell you this, right now, I don't think people could much get into it right now, because we're not networked. And we're, we're self-sustained within, within our facilities. And, you know, I, there's not a thing I can do from Calhoun Hall to tie into any kind of information at this point at the water treatment plant or at the wastewater treatment plant. Hey, we still got to get, we still got to get internet run at the wastewater treatment plant, so. So, I mean, there, there's a lot of IT needs and work that's going on. And, and Dave, I don't know if there's anything you want to say, because you, you've been working on it, so.
Well, all I can say is, is, is with what I've tried to do over the past two and a half years of doing it is, A, learn what they are, what our needs are, more than what I did before on the, on the infrastructure side of the, of the computer system. Um, I've tried to find as thrifty sources possible to, um, you know, not buying fancy gaming computers for every desktop, but buying refurbished stuff or refurbishing things, you know. Um, when the Windows ten thing happened here, you know, everybody, Windows seven is into life. I sw- took that opportunity to swap out to solid state drives, to kind of give the computers a refresh, to give them a couple more years of life. You know, it's just time for all of that stuff to be end of life, and they need to be replaced, you know. The, and the trend that I've seen using the refurbished equipment is, you know, it's, it's pretty successful. Yeah, you're going to have one that fails every now and then. You have to, you have to ha- have the plan to have, to be able to mitigate a failure in a computer pretty quickly. Here at Town Hall or at the police department, at the water plant, um, it, the, the SCADA, one just monitors, it does, has no control over the equipment, it's just a monitor. The other SCADA, the only thing that it controls is turning pumps on and off. If it were to go down, they have to do it manually if, if they had an issue. So, you know, yes, it is vul- it's always going to be vulnerable ransomware, no matter what system you put in place, no matter who's responsible for it, it's still going to be vulnerable.
We don't have redundancy in our systems for water plant control work, so there's no redundancy?
The redundancy is, is the computer controls it. If the computer fails, it's manual, just like it's always been.
But there's no redundancy in the actual computer system itself?
Well, there, not that I'm aware of, I'm not that familiar with their system. I know that they recently upgraded the one machine that, uh, does do the controlling of the pumps. Um, that was done by the vendor of the SCADA system.
Maybe the hard drive thing?
Yeah, and that, and so, what, with being able to network everything together, um, you'll be able to have off-site backups, so you will have that redundancy. So, you can have an image from a hard drive that backs up to a, a network attached storage device at each location. So, it, the data isn't, would be encrypted. If a computer were crashed, you just spin up a new one, it takes about, you have to find a machine and spin it up back an hour, and you're good to go. Um, that's how our server is at the police department. Um, secondary, um, you know, being, getting everything tied together, uh, you would have individual unique log-ons for each person. So, if you did have an incident, you can at least tie it back to where it came from and who may have done it. Um, that's one thing that needs, we've, we've transitioned to that at the police department. It needs to be done everywhere else in town. Um, it, not because, not because we need anything that, that, that does anything other than just to track who's logging on and who's logging off, that's, that's really it. I mean, doesn't, that's what the network would do, and which gives more, more opportunity to control that type of stuff, so. It's, it's really a, it's really, really needed.
I have a question, like, what are we doing for the, uh, infrastructure bill funds that, that are available?
So, there was a, at the conference, there was a lot of discussion about that. The, the final decision has not been made. Uh, Cell Reg S C is giving the recommendations, the governor's giving his recommendations, and there's, there's utility groups that are providing recommendations, there's a lot of recommendations being made. What I'm hearing is most likely to happen is it's either four or five hundred million dollars from a utility standpoint, not, not broadband and all that, but four to five hundred million dollars is going to be passed to the Rural Infrastructure Authority, who is then going to, um, the way I understand it to be right this second, is most likely is there will be a large group classification and, and allotment of funds that go to large providers or large, large systems. And then there'll be small systems. And they're still trying to debate right now, there's a big debate between Bonnie Hammond's of Rural Infrastructure Authority and some legislators at the State House on what percentage is going to large group, what percentage is going to small group. And, and that's the stuff that's not known, that still hasn't been ironed out.
Give you an example with the infrastructure, the road system, okay? Three hundred million dollars, uh, made available, the governor sends it to I-73. Uh, you're talking two point two million, uh, two point two billion dollars that, uh, is going to fix Malhunson Junction and so forth. Uh, as far as roads are concerned, rural, uh, rural road allocation is probably ten percent of the total allocation. So, there's going to be a lot of people in line for that money, not being, not saying we're not going to get any, I'm just simply saying, you don't plan on it, you try to get it, but, uh, it's not going to be the cure-all per se.
All right, so, listen, we have three big dogs at the table in Washington. We got Clyburn, we got Lindsey, and Tim.
Right.
And then Joe Wilson. Now, I was looking with, um, Clyburn's office and, um, Joe Wilson's office, and they're very interested in making sure that we get, um, a portion for it. They won't call it an earmark, but are we interested in if we can get, you know, forty million to do some things that we need to do as far as water and sewer?
I think we, any of us would be interested in forty million dollars.
If it's negotiable, if it's negotiable, maybe, um...
Wait, wait, I'm, I'm dead as serious.
I, I am too, I'd be really interested in forty million.
I would want to get those through this process, and then, then they call down here and, and somebody said, oh, we've authorized it, off y'all.
Still got... No, if they call and offer us forty million, I'll accept it in a heartbeat.
We still have eight main outstanding, you know, repairs to do, right?
Is that...
Or whatever this number minus the rest of the...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, you're, you're got a nine point, you got a nine point four number just on this part.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We haven't talked about reducing the input to this system, which is the water side, all right? Plus, we have some other major infrastructure, if we're going to grow our community.
And again, I, I, if I may, I, I think infrastructure bill, when that becomes to the state and it, it, the parameters are set for that.
Before it gets to the city.
Well, no, no, I got, I got you. Tonight, I'd like to know from the American, from the American Rescue Plan Fund.
Before, and I'm still... We, we all with that, but I want to know if there's any councilperson here that has an objection to that, to be talking to, uh, Lindsey, uh, Joe Wilson, Clyburn's office about infrastructure base.
On behalf of council or on behalf of yourself as a councilman?
Well, I mean, what difference does it make? That's the difference about distinction.
Big difference.
Okay, well, if you have a legal...
Legally, legally, it's a big difference.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm saying that anything that...
Talk to him, Steve, talk to him. I mean...
That's all, that's all I'm asking, anybody not following me, talk to him.
Well, no, but anybody can, anybody can call and talk to him.
Okay, and then if they come, we come up with something, we'll bring it back to you.
Should all call, talk to council.
I think, well, this is there, there's a discussion to be had, we'll have...
Fifty minutes?
Okay, that's all I want, all right? I just want to get up here and get the road pulled out.
What other, I mean, are there other ideas? Um, uh, again, this was staff recommendation, the floor is kind of open.
Probably a lot of potential, I mean, you know, basically, we could go like Irma, uh, we could do something for our local businesses through a nonprofit, uh, created by the town, which Irma has done, uh, run by, by Bill Danielson, I believe, over there, making grants available for, uh, some of our businesses that are hurt by this, but, uh, that's a six-month project in order to even get that kicked off, per se.
I think we heard, I don't know what happened in Needville.
Of course, we have an address broadband.
Well, yeah, but I, I don't know what, how about, seventy-three percent of our households have access to internet? Is that what the census says?
I'm, I'm not sure about that. I don't know how confident I am in the census date on that.
I would like to know that number, though, do we have that number for Robert?
I do not.
You want the census number?
No, I just want to know how many people you need for it. But anyway, uh, to piggyback on what you...
This is not representative of our necessarily represented geographics of our personnel, all right?
So, but piggyback on what Bob was saying, and kind of what Rachel Taylor was saying in our meeting, uh, Tuesday, was Tuesday, and...
Yes, sure, yeah.
Yes, okay. I don't know what happened in, in Needville, or what the festival was like in Needville, but one thing that Rachel, what? What? Anyway. In, in the downtown basement...
Not as receptive as Facebook was.
Okay, with downtown Facebook, folks, we're talking about, um, money, we have some of the buildings down there and, um, to also complement the street scale, right? And so, you know, that would be, if, for some reason, we could get the infiltration inflow, another pot of money for it, I think it would be a good idea for us to start looking at how we can help, um, uh, alleviate absentee folks in, uh, in our downtown area. And I know that, uh, Jay, I know Ted, you went to Hilton Head, did you take the bus toward it on Hilton Head? Well, Hilton Head Town Council, they actually buy, they would purchase buildings, rehab them, and then resell them.
Mayor Riley and Charleston did that.
And to, to a hell of a... So, not saying that that's, that's just out there on the table, that we have to look at how we can do something to down that. Okay.
Well, okay, but property owners are going to have to step up, I mean, you know.
Listen here, I will have Rachel Taylor call you personally, if you keep it up. Not have her call you, if you want.
Which cell owner would we go, right? Uh, the other, the other issue, of course, I just said, these funds could need to try to keep funds in the lanes where they are most appropriate and not cross over like into H-tax money and so forth because of the discussion last night, uh, additional parking in Needville. These funds theoretically could be used for that, since that would be tourism.
Theoretically, yes.
Theoretically, they could, but actually, that's more of an H-tax issue. We probably might want to go back and look at it.
Jay, did you film the, the Needville meeting? I didn't know, just, we got three days to do that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I moved, I moved to adjourn if nobody's got anything else.
No, I'm, I'm looking, you know, the IT situation, I'm just trying to put ourselves in a position to have some more flexibility of looking at what's going to be coming in the next couple of years, which are from what I see, it's going to be, costs are going to go that way, and it's going to stress the budget. We don't seem to have a lot of room to move.
It, our chemical costs are, we're getting letters all the time from chemical providers about ammonia prices increasing, sulfur prices increasing, I mean, we're, the rates are going up, the hydrant costs have increased dramatically.
We got another water main break, we call Metro, it's not going to be the same bill as per hour, so, uh, you know, my, my situation is the IT, and that would move a little more pressure on to the enterprise fund from the general fund. That's the only issue I have here.
So, you're, you're, you're promoting that a two-year for the salary?
Promoting two-year for the IT position, but everything else looks good. Assuming we put the twenty-five grand back into this, which by the way would fund half of that IT position, selling fire truck.
Motion to adjourn from Mr. Frank, got a second?
Second.
To Mr. Gambro. All in favor of Rachel, right hand? We're out of here.
It is.